We will begin in one minute. All right, everyone, welcome to the Volusia County School Board meeting. Today is February 22nd, 2022, or Tuesday, Tuesday, did they call it? I'd like to welcome everyone to our school board meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and once again, welcome to our school board meeting. I will begin by introducing the folks on the dais. We will start this time to the left. We have Mr. Carl Persis, representative for District Four. Next to Mr. Persis, we have Ms. Linda Cuthbert, District Three. Next to Ms. Cuthbert, we have Mr. Doran, our board attorney. Going to the other side, we have our amazing agency clerk, Ms. Erin Lieben. Next to Ms. Lieben, we have Mrs. Anita Burnett, representative of District Two. Next to Ms. Burnett, we have Vice Chair Jamie Haynes, representative for District One. Next to Ms. Jamie Haynes, we have Dr. Fritz, who is our superintendent. And I am Ruben Cologne, and I have the pleasure of serving as the chair this year. Items for approval on this agenda are 1.03, 5.02, 15.01, and 15.02. There will be several opportunities for public participation, including prior to voting on the consent agenda, at 6:00 PM, we will have a time certain for items pertaining to the general interest of public education in Volusia County. At that time, we will allot 15 minutes, so there will be five cards which will be heard at that time. Time will be provided for public comment on any action item before the board vote is called on that item. In addition to that, time will be provided for any additional cards that remain for public comment. Next up on the agenda, we have item 1.02, District Vision Statement and Board Member Comments. Our statement is creating lifelong learners prepared for an ever-changing global society. During this time, we typically take the opportunity to share the great things that have happened since we have, or some of the great things, because there's so many great things happening, that have happened since the last time we met. Does anybody want to begin? Ms. Cuthbert.
Good evening, everyone. It's, our mission is to ignite a passion for learning in order to have our vision, which is an ever-changing, to be able to be successful in an ever-changing global society. And some of the things that have occurred in the last couple of weeks, especially this is arts and performing arts, Music Month, it is one of the best times of the year, especially when so many of our communities are having art fairs and art fests and concerts. So I just wanted to do a shout out to our choral directors. I mean, our all-county chorus concert was Friday night, the most awesome concert I have ever been to. I left with such a warm feeling of encompassing and love. It was just amazing what those kids were able to do, the harmony and the excitement of the conductors, the guest conductors. So a shout out to the students whose talent was just shining, a bright light, and to the teachers who teach these students, to the administrators that make sure that their field trip forms are filled out and they can get there, and also for the audience. It was a fabulously enthusiastic and very well behaved and encouraging audience, so thank you to all of them. And also on Saturday morning was the Social Studies Fair at Deltona High School, exquisite as always. There was, I also traveled to the transportation hub in New Smyrna Beach High School, I think it's the best one in the county, if I don't say so myself. And also to, I had the wonderful opportunity to see our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Madison Miller at Chisholm Elementary yesterday, home of the Wildcats. She received her car, very graciously given by Daytona Kia and the Conway family. So thank you very much and congratulations to Madison. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. So I had the opportunity and the honor to attend the Campbell National Junior Honor Society induction of their students, and that was an overwhelmingly positive experience. Ms. Roland over there was sitting next to me, and Dr. Fritz was there as well, and it was just amazing. It was the support from each of the students to each other was, was just so refreshing to see, and the audience was full of parents that were happy to see their students achieving something, and I just thought that that was such a positive event, and I really was overwhelmed with joy, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Persis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Cuthbert, I think you said a lot of the things I was gonna say, and that's the way it always works around here, but that's a good thing, there's so many great things going on. But I see Mr. Harris sitting in the audience, and that reminded me that I was at Palm Terrace, was it Thursday, with the NASCAR drivers, a couple of race drivers were there with the kids in the gym and getting them all excited, and I don't know if there's any, I don't know what they were really doing there, Tucker, I really don't know. But anyway, it was, it was a good learning experience, I'm sure, and the kids were excited, they got their photo taken, and you know, it, it points out when you're old, Mr. Chair, like, I thought the NASCAR drivers were like middle school kids, and they were the drivers. They were, what, 19 and 20, I think? God, they looked like 11 and 12. But anyway, they were awesome, and they put up with a lot, and they were just great, and always loved going down to Palm Terrace Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. So I want to give a big shout out to DeBury Elementary and all their teachers and staff and administrative team there, because they pulled off the 25th anniversary celebration just a week and a half ago, and they did an excellent job, and all of the students got to be present, the current students, present in the courtyard. And one of the things that they did that I thought was really neat is they still have a teacher there, Karen Wilson, who actually helped start DeBury Elementary and open it, and they pulled her up on stage, and if you've not been to DeBury, they have, like, the sidewalks and everything are named, like, street names, and what they've done over the years is they've named them based on people that have been there and things that they've done. And so they gave her her own street sign that will now be placed there, because she started there 25 years ago, and it was a great celebration. I also had the honor, because I think sometimes people don't realize, there's, we're double, triple, quadruple booked on days and evenings, and so we have to work together to see where can we cover. But I, last Thursday evening, attended the VCC PTA Founder's Day event at Citrus Grove, representing all of us, and it was a great opportunity. The kids did a great job of singing, and what I really liked was, you know, we've got some of our middle schools now involved in the PTA piece, and that's just a great way for parents to get involved and support the schools, and it's very positive. And so that was a nice event, and I think, you know, I'm gonna leave one thing that Mr. Cologne and I were at together for him to talk about, but there's just a lot going on right now, and we appreciate what everybody's doing. Thank you.
Dr. Fritz?
Nothing at this time.
You didn't see it coming. All right, and so I want, I've got quite a few things. First, we have Deltona High was recognized by the city of Deltona for their achievement in having the highest graduation rate. I see some hands back there, yes. Graduation rates, we were at City Hall, myself, the principal administrators, along with Dr. Fritz at City Hall. Had the pleasure of visiting McGuinness Elementary and participating in their Career Day, took some real-life organs, a real heart, smoker's lungs, kidneys, pancreas, uteruses, I guess there's only one uterus. And so, yeah, and so it was awesome to show the kids and actually allow them to hold the human organs, so that was super exciting. Shout out to Discovery Elementary, who sang the National Anthem at the Solar Bears the night prior, Galaxy Middle School, under the direction of soon-to-be-retired Mrs. Wade. Wow, we're gonna miss her. They were at the Daytona Speedway and sang the National Anthem there. Shout out to all those that put together the fact fair at Heritage while Ms. Haynes was at the PTA. I was at the fact fair, and it was amazing. So shout out to everybody who put that together. And last but not least, Deltona Middle went to their first robotics competition, and they will be going to regionals on their first one, so shout out to Deltona Middle STEM. Other than that, I have nothing else. Next up's item 1.03, Approval of the Minutes. The minutes we will be approving are the January 11th Workshop Work Session, the January 11th Regular Session, the January 25th Regular Session, February 8th Workshop and Work Session, and February 8th Regular Meeting. Those minutes have been posted for the public. Does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes, as stated.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Persis, seconded by Ms. Cuthbert. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Very good, thank you. Superintendent, are there, next we move on to item 2.01. Superintendent, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the board for approval?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you. Item 2.02, Approval of the Agenda. Board members, do we have anyone who'd like to make any proposed changes to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Cuthbert to approve the agenda, as well as a second from Ms. Burnett. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, agenda has been passed. Next item up is 3.01, Recognition of School Bus Safety Poster and PSA Contest Winners and the February 2014 through the 18th as Love the Bus Week. Mr. Superintendent?
At this time, I'd like Sheriff Chitwood to come forward, as well as Dr. Sanoff and Rodney Smith, our Director of Transportation.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Cologne, members of the board, Superintendent Fritz, thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes with you this evening for a two-part recognition. Tonight, I want you to meet the award-winning students who have now participated in the poster portion of Safety Week. In addition, I'm also pleased to inform you that this week has also been Love the Bus Week, as we show our appreciation to our bus operators, bus attendants, and bus mechanics for their dedication and hard work throughout the year. As you take a look at our short video, you will see smiling faces of our bus personnel who meet our students each morning and afternoon, and of those who keep our buses operating safely. Our true superstars tonight, however, are the students who have captured our attention with their talent, creativity, and will be receiving cash awards sponsored by the Volusia County Sheriff's Youth Foundation for their hard work of excellence in portraying this year's theme, Be Safe, Know the Danger Zone. Thank you. And here with us at that also is Sheriff Mike Chitwood, who will bring a welcome and then assist us with our recognitions.
Good afternoon. We really appreciated the opportunity to partner with the schools. We started a foundation in 2017. It's made up of community donors, and basically what we do is if we see a need or something that's going to encourage education, sports, intervening in human trafficking, the foundation could intercede with the monies that are provided to us way outside of the city budget. Like I said, this is community donors. I don't know how many kids we helped, how many families we helped this Christmas because of it, and when they heard about this contest, they said, okay, we're in. So I think it's, what's it, $250 first prize?
300.
300 first prize, 150 second prize, $50 third prize. So?
So at this time, I'm gonna announce the award winners for the elementary division from Spirit Elementary, and I'll call your name if you'll come up. Shallow Rosenfeld, fifth grader, first class winner. And our second place winner, also from Spirit Elementary, Amaya Sanchez-Morero. And our third place winner, Evelyn Picklesager, third grader from Spirit Elementary. And for the secondary award winners, first place from New Smyrna Beach High School, Oceana Lolick, 10th grader. Our second place winner, Miguel Kelly Romero, 11th grader, New Smyrna Beach High. They were supposed to have a representative, but our third place winner is Scarlett Wishamire, ninth grader, also from New Smyrna Beach High. Thank you.
I just want to point out two quick things. We have a busy night tonight with the schools. Tonight, we're at Spirit Elementary. We're doing a presentation on bullying and the social media, and also we have an interactive display for parents, when you search your kids' rooms, there's certain items that you could, they could buy, and you think is a hairbrush or whatever, and it's really not. So that's going on, and then we have something else going on at Deltona Middle. But I also want to thank the school board, in particular the superintendent and his staff, for their support in helping us push our Juvenile Assessment Center, Family Unification Center, across the finish line finally. For 16 years, I've pushed and pushed and pushed, we finally got there, and I can't tell you how invaluable it was that the superintendent get up there and talk about how this is needed in our community and how communities he served, and you could see the definite benefit and the correlation to what we're trying to do. So thank you all very much, have a great night.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, next up is item 3.02, Recognition from the Florida School Board Association for the Board for their Master Board Program. Ms. Pickers. Welcome to Volusia County.
Thank you. It seems like we haven't seen each other in so long.
I know.
I'm just excited to be here on behalf of the Florida School Boards Association, and I'm actually going to present two awards tonight. The first being the Master Board Award, that goes to all of the designation for your hard work as a board and a superintendent, the governance team together. The Master Board Program is designed to help the governance team be more effective and efficient. Research shows that there's a direct correlation between student achievement, district culture, and the way that the board and superintendent work together, and their efficiency and effectiveness. The training focused on student achievement. It also focused on consensus building, conflict resolution, leadership, and your differing roles between superintendent and school boards, and we talked about trust a lot. And it is with great proudness that I am able to present you this plaque, because I do believe that you're working towards working together in an effective and efficient manner, and I appreciate the work you put into this. And after I read the next part, we'll get up and get a picture. Okay, I'm also here tonight to present Ms. Jamie Haynes with her Certified Board Member Distinction. And the Certified Board Member Program through the Florida School Boards Association is designed to help individual board members in their board member role. It consists of 96 hours of training, some of the topics or some of the categories of training are school finance, policy governance, personnel and bargaining, advocacy and leadership, and a whole lot of other things. And congratulations for you to receive this distinction, and it's, a lot of work goes into both of these, so congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have item 3.03, Recognition of March 2022 as Youth Art Month, Music in Our Schools Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month. Mr. Superintendent?
I'd like to ask Mr. Bryce Hammond to come forward, and Mr. John Dupuy.
Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Fritz. It is certainly my distinct pleasure to present today on Music in Our Schools Month and Theater in Our Schools Month. The purpose of Music in Our Schools Month is to raise awareness of the importance of music education for all children, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. Music in Our Schools Month is an opportunity for music teachers to bring their music programs to the attention of the school and the community, and to display the benefits that school music brings to students of all ages. As human beings, music and arts are a part of our soul. It is a way in which students can express themselves in a positive way. Music is curricular, it's extracurricular, it's academic, it's therapeutic, and it's necessary. We are blessed that every single school in Volusia County schools has a music program. In addition to our incredible student musicians, we have some of the finest performing arts teachers in Florida, right here in our district. Our students don't take classes, they take teachers. Our teachers put in extra time that's not mandated, and often the last cars left in the parking lot are those of performing arts teachers. Our teachers put in Our teachers put in extra time for rehearsals and performances, provide for out-of-school concert experiences, bring in guest artists, and for many students are the most stable and present adult in their lives. Composer Von Fleischer, that's how you pronounce it, says, "The music department is an alternate universe where students are often unrecognizable from who they are outside of it." Why are they unrecognizable? Because the shy become confident, the agitated become calm, the lonely become included, the quiet become heard, and the lost become found. Not a week goes by that schools are not involved in rehearsals, performances, and community involvement. I hope you've had the opportunity this year to view performances by our marching, concert, and jazz bands, as well as our orchestras, our theater plays and musicals, our dance competitions and recitals, and our elementary music performances and showcases. In addition, we've had the opportunity already this year to present all county showcase concerts for chorus, band, elementary music, and dance. And in March, we'll feature our all-county orchestras on March 10th at University High School and our all-county jazz bands on April 1st at University High School. In addition, the next two weeks feature our band and choirs performing at their annual music performance assessments. Now, here is Deland Band student Cooper Sermons to speak on how music in our schools has positively affected him.
Good evening, everyone. As you said, I'm Cooper. I am currently the band captain at Deland High School, and I would love to talk about my love for the music and the benefits it provides for kids of all ages. As a kid myself, I spent seven years in the band throughout middle school and high school, and I can say that music has played a huge part in getting me through school. And it truly, for me, was an escape. For school, it was sometimes difficult to get through the day, but I always knew that I had that band class or that jazz band class to get me through that day. And it was just, it was like nothing other. I had a family, I had the means to express myself in a different way that you couldn't get in a normal class setting. And I've also seen through myself and my peers that there's a growth of confidence. Everyone feels so much better speaking in front of people. Like, I would not be able to speak in front of you guys if I hadn't had this experience of maybe speaking in front of all my classmates every day, playing a solo in front of people every single day. It just, it builds that confidence. And it's given me the opportunities to push myself further and go out of my comfort zone. And to that, I'm really thankful for our music programs. So, I personally think that everyone should be involved in music, and I couldn't imagine my life without music. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Cooper. And now we would like to proclaim the month of March as Theater in Our Schools Month. When we think of performing arts, we think of music, dance, and theater. These areas allow students to be creative, to express themselves, to offer critique on their own performance, and to accept constructive criticism in a positive way. Theater has a unique way of connecting people from diverse backgrounds. Theater gives students a voice. Theater creates shared experiences, and theater brings us together. Theater students have a five times lower dropout rate, are four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement, are four times more likely to participate in a math or science fair, and are three times more likely to win an award for school attendance. According to the U.S. Department of Education, arts-rich schools benefit everyone. Research increasingly shows that arts education heightens engagement for all students and can increase motivation and persistence for the most at-risk of failing or dropping out of school. Learning in the arts also uniquely equips students with the skills in creativity and divergent thinking, as well as problem-solving and teamwork, that they need to be college and career-ready. It's through the theater and the arts that we give students a voice that might not otherwise have one. Theater is where students can surround themselves in a creative and academic art form that is meaningful, relevant, and personal. Now, here's Deland Theater student Kendall Morielli to speak about how theater in our schools has positively affected her.
So, I am an IB Theater student, as well as president of Hill Street Theater at Deland High School. I have been immersed in the arts my entire life, whether it be through dance, chorus, or theater. Throughout my high school career, and as well as my entire life in the arts, I have found myself and my purpose. It has aided me in building up my own self-esteem and confidence, as well as working through a lot of my own personal issues. I have also developed much better communication skills. Studies by Champions of Change have proven that drama classes benefit a person's reading proficiency, as well as self-concept and motivations, as well as higher levels of empathy and tolerance towards others, which is something we certainly need in our world. In America, 93% of our population view the arts as essential in order to complete education. I view the arts not only as a benefit academically, but it also benefits a person emotionally. For most students, theater class is a place where somebody can escape into characters or into their old worlds, or even with the people around them. I know my theater class and my director have changed my lives for the better. I have made the best memories throughout theater, and every high school moment, I think I've always been thinking about theater, even when I'm probably supposed to be thinking about education, but, you know, tomato's tomato. But I will say, it is very important, regardless of what type of arts it is, to dive into it and really immerse yourself into a completely different world. It allows escapism, and it's kind of a safe haven, and it gives everyone a break from their daily lives. So, yes, theater is very important and very relevant in today's society.
And thank you to Cooper and Kendall for both speaking today. Board Members, we appreciate the opportunity to promote Music in Our Schools Month and Theater in Our Schools Month. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, oh.
Why do we have to do art?
Mr. Hammond's here.
Mr. Hammond's here. Must be the arts.
What do I have, a minute thirty left? Am I good? Chairman Cologne, school board members, Dr. Fritz, thank you for having me today. I am here to celebrate, of course, Youth Art Month, piggybacking on, I'm not, it was said not to say that. Anyway, so everything that has been said by these fine folks here, we are the same with visual arts. I want to be really candid with you. We have many, many kids that stay alive because of visual arts. We have many, many students that graduate because of visual arts. We have many, many students that go to important jobs in visual arts. I'm going to be very candid here. I was just at the Scholastic Art State, and I was on the stage, and we had so many more students on that stage for state, for Gold Keys. And I was just impressed, and we went to the show that's now in Jacksonville right now, and we are rocking it. They have 340,000 students, we have 64,000, and we are right up there killing it. And a year ago, and I'll get back to script in a second, but a year ago, I was interviewed by the Hometown News, and he had come up from Dade County, and he said, "So, what are your main art schools?" And I said, "We don't need art schools because our K-12 teachers in art are so great, and they just do such a great job. We don't need that, and we still are always on top in AP, in IB, and now in ACE. We're starting up." So, I was just, that was really important to me to do that. So, I am going to go back to script. So, I'm Bryce Hammond, I'm visual arts specialist. Thank you for having me. I'm thrilled to be talking about Youth Art Month. Art education develops students' creative, problem-solving, and critical thinking abilities. Art education gives students deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. And I'm going to add this, art education keeps kids alive. So, although we have community art exhibits through the year, the highest concentration is in March. I encourage you to go out and see, everyone in this whole room, more than 1,000 artworks right now that will be out for you to see in the county. We have the Advanced Placement Art Exhibition at Art House Gallery in Port Orange right now. We have the, I pulled some pieces from that, and they're in the lobby there, you can see those. And then Volusia Students Create, we're going to have 52 schools represented there. That's our assessment, our post-assessment in the fall. And that's going to be at Museum of Arts and Sciences in Daytona, and in the main gallery, not in the weird, like, walk-through space. So, please, everybody, board, everyone that's here, please come see it. Right now, we have the Scholastic Art Show, which is up at the Jacksonville, the library in Jacksonville. And we have the AP Art Show, I told you, at Art House. We're doing a encore exhibition that includes University High School, they're not in that one. So, that's going to be up in March. We have the Art House IB Exhibition, which is Spruce Creek High School, and we're going to add Deland High School this year to that. We have the Canaveral Seashore Dora Sleeper House Youth Show, which is one I just added, and the teachers don't know that yet, but now they do. And that's going to be a K-12. And then we have the Volusia Students Create at MOS, like I just said before. Anyway, thank you so much. I know that, I do want to say this one thing, all these shows and more are facilitated by our wonderful art teachers on a volunteer basis. Some of them get a little bit of a stipend, but normally they just work overtime for this. And they also mat, frame, drive, hang, and attend the receptions and awards in the evenings on the weekends. So, I do want you to understand how hard these teachers work outside of the classroom. It breaks my heart when I have to email them every day and say, "Where is the pictures? Where is the pictures? Have you got them in? I'll frame them." But we have one of the most amazing programs in the whole state here, and my friend Lori, who is in charge of art in Deval County, she said, "What's in the water in Volusia?" And I'm like, "Arts in the water in Volusia." Because we're killing y'all. I got you. Anyway, so thank you all so much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, girls. Ms. Cuthbert?
And just a plug, just to give you an idea of what's going on just this week. This last weekend and this weekend is Spruce Creek High School's musical theater production of Chicago, which I'll be there Friday night. This weekend is the Art Fiesta in New Smyrna Beach, where a lot of student artwork will be displayed. Not only that, but a lot of our teachers and students have booths, and they're going to be selling their pieces. And also, Thursday evening, I've been invited to Coronado Elementary's artist trading activity with the PTA. So, okay, all right, because usually Mr. Hammond is the one who is so good at giving, because I've seen him work at Indian River Elementary on the trading card. So, it's going to be an exciting night. So, thank you for letting me do some more plugging.
Board, as you heard, art is in the water in Volusia County. Next up, we have 3.04, recognition of March 7th through the 11th as National School Breakfast Week. Mr. Superintendent?
I'd like to ask Dr. Shanoff to come forward, Heather Demoliya, and Robinson Prime.
Thank you, Chair Cologne, Board Members, Dr. Fritz, good evening. I wanted to just take a moment to recognize March 7th through 11th as National School Breakfast Week. The National School Breakfast Program has been around for 60 years, and this is a time for us to recognize the importance that breakfast plays in the education of our children. For the past two years, we have been able to offer free breakfast for all students in Volusia County, thanks to the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We serve, on average, 13,000 breakfast meals a day, which makes us the largest food service provider in all of Volusia County. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank all of the wonderful Schoolway Cafe professionals that serve our students every single day. They do so with a smile on their face, they do so in the most welcoming way, and we're so fortunate to have them. We do have a little video that commemorates National School Breakfast Week.
It's very important to have a nutritious breakfast every day because you need the energy to get going. Your body's been at rest, and you want to wake up and get going for the day, and little kids are growing, so they need a good breakfast to help them grow.
I think it's really important because that pretty much powers your day.
Because it's important for your health, and it keeps you focused during the day, and it helps you get energy.
To get stronger, I think, I guess.
A healthy breakfast impacts your mind because it turns your food and your energy, which you need to think and learn, plus your stomach doesn't growl while you're sitting there listening to your teacher.
I can't talk, my mouth is.
I'm a killer tongue. Steak.
I love seeing my students come in in the mornings and eat breakfast because then I know they're going to have a great day learning because they've gotten all their energy from eating a great breakfast.
So, lastly, I want to thank our director, Heather Demiola, for leading the charge at Schoolway Cafe, and thank you so much for recognizing National School Breakfast Week.
Thank you very much.
You don't want to say anything?
We are so excited for National School Breakfast Week, and we'll be sending out invites for you, Board Members, and Superintendent, if you'd like to come serve it up with us to take off National School Breakfast Week. But we love our kids, we love our students, and we want them to be nourished every day. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items. Dr. Fritz, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Board Members, are there any items that you'd like to remove for discussion? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
10.13.
Any other items? All right, and so, items removed from the consent agenda will be heard following the vote during item 6.01. Board Members, hearing no proposed changes to the consent agenda minus, actually, we did have a change, minus 10.13, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the before-mentioned changes, which include minus 10.13?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item 10.13.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Persis, seconded by Ms. Burnett. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to the district for addressing my concerns over one vendor that we had. Thank you for the investigation. Thank you to Mr. Doran for speaking to the vendor. I appreciate the input. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Hearing no, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, next we move on to items 6.01, which would be items removed. Ms. Haynes, you asked to remove 10.13. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, 10.13. So 10.13 involves Edith I. Stark Elementary, and I thought, Dr. Shanoff, could you please come forward? I've expressed concern before about the fact that Edith I. Stark Elementary was allowed, in some ways, to go into disrepair, and the school itself was built back in the 50s. And so, I had talked with Dr. Shanoff, because I want every child to have the best opportunity and the best place to learn, and there are some issues with that building. And so, I thought we had talked about the Castaldi Report, and that all but one building failed. So I'm just surprised that this is just only, once again, addressing a renovation and an addition there. So are we only going to go in and do renovations and an addition, or are we going to build a new school in this location?
So 10.13 is just the selection of the architectural firm. In terms of the, in terms of the Castaldi, the Castaldi is a, is a third-party coming in, the DOE requires it, to review the condition of the buildings. The Castaldi does not show or make the decision, one way or the other, between renovation or rebuild. That decision is ultimately made by the board. The presentation will be made by the architectural firms, and then, well, the architectural firm, and then we will go ahead, and we will share those exhibits with the board, and the board will either approve them or reject them. As far as the Castaldi goes, the Castaldi, again, is nothing more than, than a condition analysis, and we're not at a point, really, where we have seen drawings from a architectural firm, that, the architectural firm that, that would be approved this evening, that would indicate whether or not we're taking the entire building, or all buildings, to the ground, or whether or not there are parts of that building, or some of the buildings that can be salvaged. We're not at that point in the process. However, as we continue to go along this process, we can continue to bring those back to the board. So at this point, it is not a new building project, it is, can still consider it a renovation project, but again, we will bring those exhibits to the board for either approval or rejection.
Thank you. So what I'd like to further add is Stark Elementary is not built at the regular size that we now build elementary schools at, and we're continuing to have extreme growth in the Deland area. And, you know, I've been, I've asked repeatedly to have an analysis done across the district at where each of our schools is at, and what the capacity is, and if they're over-capacity, because I think we're gonna be facing some tough decisions here in the near future of possibly having to, you know, rezone where some of our schools are. So I would just like each and every one of you to, if you have never visited Stark Elementary, I'd encourage you to visit and take a look at the buildings, and also think about the fact that Deland is continuing to grow, and we have a school sitting there that's not, it's, it's, it's not designed to hold 700 and some students. And I just feel that if we're going to need additional space for students, that we should look at, you know, building, especially with what, and look at the Castaldi Report, every building failed on it but one. And maybe it's time, because we already own the property, to build a building there so that we can do some rezoning, so that we're not then having to build another new school in a part of Deland, like take what we already have. But thank you, Dr. Shanoff, that was what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments?
You gotta make the motion?
So I'll make the motion at this time to move forward on item 10.03, with the understanding that the architect firm being selected will take a full look at all of it and provide us with information, not on just additions and renovations, but also possibly a new building.
10.13.
10.13, I apologize. I did say 10.03.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Ms. Haynes to approve item 10.13, seconded by Mr. Persis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, wonderful, thank you so much. Next, we have the superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Chair. February 21st to the 25th is known as Florida Public Schools Week. March 22nd is the, or March 2022 is National Athletic Training Month. Tuesday, March 2nd is Read Across America. And March 6th through the 12th is School Social Worker Week. The next school board meeting will be here, in this boardroom, at 4:30 on March 8th. The workshop, workshop will be on March 8th as well, at 12:30.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next up, we have 14.01, Human Resources Update.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. West to come forward.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
While he's getting seated there. I don't have it on my calendar, is, is that the only school board meeting we're gonna have in March?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So the March 8th? I just wanna make, make sure I had it correct on mine.
Yeah, because it's Spring.
Superintendent says yes, that's good enough for me. March 8th's workshop and school board meeting, that's the only one.
Yes.
In March. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. West?
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. Just wanna catch you and the public up to where we are in regards to kind of our updates. We haven't talked for the last month and a half or so, since, since Christmas break, in regards to instructional vacancies, because we have had some folks, of course, resign and retire over that period of time, because that's kind of a natural time of the year to happen. We've also had our recruitment efforts continue. So just to flash up here, our instructor, instructional vacancies are 112, that's actually those 74 classroom vacancies. We do have in place, of course, our, our school-based subs that we have that are filling in for those teachers who are absent on a consistent basis. On our next slide, we have our support vacancies, and this is an area, of course, that we have, we have recognized that there is a definite need. We have 343 total support vacancies. If you'll take a look, you'll see the largest numbers are in our EDEP program, and BD, BTB program, before the Pell program, and of course, our paraprofessional areas. So those are a few areas that we are looking to target as well. So our real focus now, of course, is for our next school year, projections and preparations for, for what we're going to be doing. And we have calendared out and shared out what it is that we're doing in regards to allocation and the entire hiring process. And you'll notice, if you look at the bottom of the screen, that March, excuse me, April 20th is the day that we actually are targeting, and then working backwards from there, because our job fair is, of course, our, our biggest time, that we recruit and get, hire our teachers. Our transfer fair will be April the 4th through the 8th. Our displacement tentative teacher assignments are notified, notified by April the 1st, where we're actually giving our transfer fair registration. Our teachers are our opportunity on March the 21st, and then our allocations are being dispersed at the end of this week to the schools. So we will be working furiously over the next two months to, to put this in place, so that we will be able to hire the most qualified teachers. We are, in the meantime, working our retention incentives as well. We're working with our teachers to have a salary committee and our ESC committee to work on workloads, and we have had a number of meetings in regards to that. We are continuing our exit interview process, notifying those folks who have resigned this school year, getting out communications to our staff in regards, through News for You and the VCS Spotlight, and acknowledging some of the, the good work that's going on around our, our district. Also, I've been able to hand out our service pins. Specifically, I actually go out to schools for those folks who have 30 years or more to hand out their service pins, and it's been great, the last few weeks, to be able to acknowledge those folks who have given so much time to our district. Just kind of a quick bargaining update, we, of course, have concluded bargaining with VIEW, and Impasse is kind of looming with Ask Me, but we've been able to put out the dates on when our payroll is coming out for all of our employees, so this is just kind of a highlight reminder for all of our employees of when those salary raises are going into effect. So that's really our HR update for the evening, and just wanted to come before you and acknowledge, appreciate all the hard work my, my team has done, and all of our principals and teachers have done to get us this far this year. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. West, any questions for Mr. West?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Persis? Yeah. He went first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. West, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What, I, I probably ask this question annually, so I should know the answer, but I, you know, I...
I forget. I hope I know the answer, then, if you ask me before.
I'm sure you'll give me the same answer you gave me before, but I can't remember what it is. The, the question that I have is, my concern for the, the veteran teachers who are doing well, and are working away from home, I mean, far away from their home, and they would like to transfer to a school closer to where they live, and so, they put their request in, I guess, to do that. And I know the stars have to line up, because there has to be a vacancy in the school where they want to go, or schools, but I just wanted to know if you could walk me through, is there a conflict between a time when a displaced teacher may get that vacancy where that veteran teacher wanted to go first, but a displaced, maybe first-year or second-year teacher gets it before this 10-year teacher who's been wanting to get closer to home for a long time?
So, to answer your question, no. And that, we've tried to set it up in such a way, and we've worked with Ms. Albert, and we actually have put language in the contract, in negotiations this year, to open up our transfer window from three schools to, they actually are allowed to apply for five schools, plus an entire geographic area. So for example, if you're at Pathways and live in Deltona, and you're interested in getting into a Deltona-area school, you can request, and that's that, March the, the 21st is when there, that registration opens, and to, to transfer to a school closer to your home. And then we actually have the notification of the displacements on April the 1st. Then we have our transfer fair. So that means that if you are displaced, or if you're interested in transferring, you have that week to actually seek a transfer, and can do that. After that's completely closed down on April the 8th, that's when we look at our displaced teachers, and then that's when we actually place them right before the job fair.
Great.
So, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. West.
Cuthbert?
I think Ms. Haynes is next.
Go ahead, you were raised first.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, first of all, putting in all the information on the bargaining and when people are getting paid.
Yes, ma'am.
The VIEW instructional, as well as the VIEW support, that's very, very helpful. Because we've just recently settled negotiations, and because of all the different payments, the longevity, the bonuses, the increase, has that had an impact on, for example, either ACE or AP or IB payments to teachers?
So, the ACE and IB bonuses that were paid out were, were based on a few things. First, the test scores, of course, but there also had to be a verification for the FTE process, and that was a little delayed this year compared to last year, I think it was like a week or two delay. And because of that, the curriculum team had to confirm that with FTE, and I know that a question has come up about that, and I've responded in reference to that, so thank you for bringing that up. But it really has had nothing to do with negotiations, it's had to do with that FTE notification process, or identification process.
Okay, and one more, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say a teacher has been displaced, could you explain to the public what that means?
Yes. A displacement means that if there's a reduction in enrollment in a school site, it could be very possible that we have to actually lose a teacher from that particular school site, because there are too many teachers for the number of students that are there. That doesn't mean they lose their job, they still keep their job in Volusia County, okay? It just means that they aren't particularly located at that particular school anymore. So that means that we will find a position for them at another school. And of course, as you know, and you can see, we have a number of vacancies right now, so we have not had a concern finding places for all of our displaced teachers over the last couple of years.
And if a teacher's been out on medical leave, for example, that person, that teacher has first dibs on the position coming back to school, correct?
So it depends on what their, their state of leave is. If they take, and there are a number of different variances on, on how long an extended leave can be, but what we pretty much do is that if they take a leave from a position, they are allowed to come back to that position, unless it's an extended leave beyond what the, the contract year is. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. West. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you. So on the chart where you're going over the dates, the one thing, though, that's not listed there is non-reappointments. And I know that last year, that was a little tricky, because, you know, so when are non-reappointments, finding out that they're not being reappointed?
So that actually is, it's not listed on here, but when a principal notifies of displacements and tentative teacher assignments for the next year, that's that April the 1st date, that is pretty much an indication at that time if that teacher's not gonna be returning for that year.
Okay.
For, for whatever reason, whether it's a displacement, or whether it's a non, non-reappointment.
Alright, and how does that play into the transfer fair, because I know that that...
They are not eligible to transfer if they are non-reappointed.
Okay. And then, my other question, which I did talk to you a little bit earlier today about, and so I thought maybe now would be a good time to just share, who, if someone, and there's a variety of reasons, you know, if someone this year went out on a leave of absence due to like maternity, well, and I know that maternity leave starts out as FMLA, but it sometimes moves into a leave of absence if they choose to stay home longer, or, you know, someone has taken a leave of absence for, you know, a variety of reasons, or they've even worked for us, and then maybe a spouse has been transferred, and they've had to, to leave us, you know, to move to another state, do that transfer. So now that the bargaining has been set, anyone that's in one of those situations, who should they reach out to and contact or speak with about whether or not they're receiving the retro pay, because they may have taught summer programs and things like that?
Right. They can go ahead and reach out to their human resources representative, and if not, if they can't get the answer from their human resources rep, it, it depends on how long their leave is, whether it's an extended leave or a short-term leave, and whether it's within that same fiscal year that they return. But if they have questions beyond that, they can either reach, reach out to Rachel or myself, and we will answer that question, so, or Emma, either one. Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Because I, I shared...
I know that that was brought up earlier. Yes, ma'am.
I shared with Mr. West earlier today, just some scenarios over the years that I've learned of, and my personal thoughts are that if a teacher worked here during this school year at any point in time, for whatever reason they went out, sometimes they may have to go out to, you know, for medical reasons, or as I said, a move, I feel if they worked, I personally don't feel that the date we settled, the contract, should determine whether or not they get the retro pay, because I feel if they were here, they should receive that, but that's my personal feeling on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Alright, we will go ahead and move on to item 15.01, Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 701. Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy seven zero one. Dr. Fritz.
Can I ask Mr. Pendley to come forward?
Welcome, Mr. Pendley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Fritz, thank you. Item fifteen oh one is a request to advertise an amendment to policy seven oh one, which is your district audit committee finance policy. This is somewhat time-sensitive and brought out of our new rule cycle or rule-making cycle that we're going to, but at the request of the chief financial officer, it was important for time purposes to get this amendment on, for board consideration at this time. The amendment would allow two additional alternates to be added to your five-member audit committee. That is brought about in case someone needs to, for whatever reason, be absent from an audit committee meeting. You would have an alternate that could attend in that individual's place. Again, this is a request to advertise the amendment as it's been drafted, and it would be our request that you authorize us to do that and bring it back once it has been advertised in the next board cycle.
Thank you, board members. Do we have any questions? Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. My one question is, will the alternates be attending all the meetings with the regular board members, or how, how are they brought up to speed?
That's not in the policy. That would be a matter of practice if they want to. I'm sure that they can. This would be for those types of meetings where someone is not capable of, of attending, then you would have an alternate that you could call. Apparently, this is an issue that the chief financial officer has encountered recently where someone was, we had to have a three-person committee-
Right.
... and there weren't enough people to fill the, the committee seats for that particular meeting, so they needed to have some alternates.
Thank you.
Ms. Haynes?
So, I just want to clarify what's happened. So currently, there, the committee's five members, and I happen to chair the committee as a representative from the school board, and we have four community members, one that each of you nominated or agreed to leave in that position. And they're a wonderful group of people, and they do this for free. And so what's happened recently is we've got proposals that we have to read and score, and in order to read and score the proposals to determine, you know, a group that will do another set of audits for us, we have to have at least three, and we ran into an issue not, with the five not having three that could do it. And so that's when we discussed putting two alternate members on there, because at times, because you guys did such a great job on who you selected, sometimes they may have to recuse themselves because one of the companies that's putting in, you know, for a proposal for us to consider for a specific type of audit, they may do work with or have done work with, and so they're all, they always recuse themselves and all that, and we just, or, you know, health issues come up and, and family things. So that's why we decided to move forward with adding two alternates onto the committee, and we're very open to if you have another name that you think should be considered for an alternate. We just want to make sure that we don't stop the work that we have to do because we don't have enough people at that moment in time to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. So how will these folks be selected? I know that we normally have one for each board member, and Ms. Haynes, of course, serves on there, but how do we plan on selecting these board members?
The, this policy doesn't change in terms of the actual committee members. The alternates would be recommended by the chair of the committee and approved by the board.
Great. So Jamie Taggert?
Yes, but as I said, I'm more than happy to take any recommendations from any of you if you know of another individual that you feel would be great to have as an alternate that may have to step in and serve on reading a set of proposals, scoring them, or, you know, attend the meetings.
So for practical sake, should we send those to Mr. Pendley and then, or Ms. Nead, and it'll then be presented to you all as a board for consideration? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
All right, great. Mr. Persis?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to, just to clarify. So I'm hearing you all say, from our master board training today, that the alternates would not have to attend every meeting, only if called for, or is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think it's a choice. I think, you know, like-
Okay, choice is good, but it wouldn't be mandatory, because when, when we're asking, the first question they ask is, how often do they meet? How long are the meetings?
We, we, I'll be honest with you, we don't meet a lot, except for when it, there's two times we really do meet. When we receive back audit reports from whoever's auditing, we hold a meeting so that everybody on the committee can hear at one time what the auditors have shared, you know, based on the report. The other time, and this is the tricky one, and, and I would say be honest with people about this one, we've had anywhere from three to six companies that we have to at, at one time read their proposals and score their proposals, and most proposals are on the average of eighty pages.
Yeah.
And so that's what takes the time. And so that's really where we need two more people that, you know, if, if someone has to recuse themselves and someone is out possibly with a health or family issue, we, we're just not enough people to get it done. And so that's when we need someone.
Okay.
But they have to be willing to want to read and score, and they're, they're not entertained, you know, as far as reading.
I'm sure. They're not. So, Mr. Chair, to repeat what you said, you said to get names and give it to Mr. Pendley?
If that's how the superintendent, that sounds good?
Is that what you wanted to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That way, we're not communicating, it's going through him, and then it'll go to the committee for presentation and consideration.
Absolutely. If it's the board's pleasure to advertise this policy change, once that's made, then we'll be happy to facilitate getting those names to the board for action.
Great. Thank you so much. Any further questions? I don't see anybody on the queue. Dr. Fritz?
Superintendent recommends the approval to advertise proposed amendments to school board policy seven oh one.
Board, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do we have a motion to approve item fifteen point zero one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we advertise the proposed amendments to school board policy seven oh one, fiscal management.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Motion's been properly made by Ms. Cuthbert, seconded by Ms. Haynes. Any further discussion? Here are none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say a nay. Motion passes. Wonderful. We will take a sixteen-minute break until six o'clock, and we will continue with public comment at six PM. Thank you.
We have one minute, one minute, we will call the meeting to order in one minute. It is six o'clock, we will go ahead and get started, at this time, we're gonna move into item thirteen point zero one, and this is public participation for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. The board is a policymaking body and expects that complaints will be handled through administrative channels, anyone wishing to express an opinion during a time reserved for public comment shall complete any information request card, which are the yellow cards, if you'd like a card and you haven't gotten one, they have one at the door for you, if you'd like to We are going to allot a total of fifteen minutes during this first public participation, there will be additional time at the end of the meeting to, for any additional speakers that would like to speak. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which their cards were received, speakers will have three minutes to address the board, there is a timer here in the front to go ahead and ask you to keep your comment to three minutes, I will kindly thank you for your comment when time comes. We value public comment and respect the times provided for each speaker, all speakers deserve to be heard without interruption, audience support of a speaker will be charged against a speaker's time, during this time, board members will not respond or engage in any dialogue with the speaker. The absence of board member comment or response does not in any way suggest the members' lack of interest in or the members' support or opposition to the comments that are being made. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call, queue up number one and number two, first, we have Mr. Jackson, after Mr. Jackson, we have Ms. Sheila Butchart, please come to the front, Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening. I first off like to state that I am not up here for my daughter alone, but to the many victims, past, present, and future. My daughter was a victim of bullying situation where NSB Middle School, eighth grade admin, jumped to conclusion and completely missed the opportunity to intervene as an admin should. Due to her negligence, she completely missed the opportunity to intervene, but, I'm sorry, became, due to her negligence, and rushed to judgment, my daughter became a victim not once, but twice, in the same day by way of fellow student and administration. My daughter reacted to the bully, then was issued a ten-day suspension. While the bully was issued a six-day suspension, I'd have to ask, where's the leadership? When it comes to NSB Middle School, my daughter is among the top honor students at the school, not only did she receive a ten-day suspension, she was stripped of her SGA duties, office aid duties, school news duties, and most recently, she's been stripped of her ability to participate in school Washington DC trip. So again, I'd have to ask, where's the leadership? After learning about the DC trip, I could see the direct comparison of the school-to-prison pipeline scenario playing out in my daughter's situation. How does any student learn in a system to take positive steps forward when they're consistently reminded of the things that they've done or the troubles that they had in the past? We're not dealing with adults here, we're dealing with children whose brains aren't fully developed, so when I send my child to school, I can only wonder if my child's being prepared for prison, or is she being shaped and molded to being an outstanding, law-abiding citizen? It's time for real change, time to incorporate new ideas, but it starts with leadership. And if Volusia County School Board leadership isn't willing to have a conversation or take on new ideas, then the leadership has failed. Change is an action word, so where's the leadership for change? Our children's lives are literally on the line, allow me to read some truths and not facts. Fortunately, there are actions that students and school staff can take to prevent bullying and harassment in schools, and to create a more positive school climate. The culture of school violence cannot be impacted by only working with bullies and victims alone, it takes consistent and united action by everyone, students, school staff, administration, and parents. So I don't stand here just for my daughter, I stand for, or I speak up for those students who have been bullied, past, present, and future.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, next up, Ms. Sheila Butchart, Butchart?
Welcome. Thank you, I'm Sheila Butchart, I'm speaking today for three teachers who have sent me emails that were not able to be here or afraid to be here, and I am speaking for them. The first one, there's no support for student behaviors, we have students who have aggressive behaviors, who strike other students, teachers, and staff, and there are no consequences for those actions. We must deal with the continuous behaviors even though, after behavior interventions are put into place, students don't receive discipline or consequences for their behavior. Students run the school, not the adults, these behaviors are taking away from my teaching time, and I cannot teach effectively, which affects my other students. Students need to start being accountable for their actions. That was the first one. Second one, there's no support from the district for pre-K ESE level, they don't come to visit the room or check on us, especially with the behaviors that they're aware of, we notify them that we need their support and help, and no one comes even after they say that they will, or they pick up and pick and choose who they will visit instead of visiting all the pre-K ESE teachers. Students are placed in the wrong classrooms, ESE, pre-K ESE students are being put in classrooms without any meetings or notices, and we're supposed to just accept it. For example, the teacher who wants to transfer a student from their classroom to another classroom is not notifying the other teacher, and the pre-K ESE department is unaware of it, but doesn't notify, is aware of it, but doesn't notify the incoming teacher. I'm not a dumping ground because another teacher cannot handle those students, they pick and choose, the ESE district-level staff do not support us, they pick and choose who they want to listen to and who they want to help. I have never seen my pre-K resource teacher this entire year, she sent an assistant in early October, but no other communication. Number three, the workload this year is just too much, there are too many assessments, not enough teaching time, double the workload with little pay, we should not be liable to make eligibilities for incoming pre-K students consistently when they have, we have other work to get done, and the district should handle the eligibilities. They are time-consuming, and we do not have time to work with our students, do their job, and do our job too. Overall, there is no support, the way student behaviors are being handled, and there needs to be a change. I listened to, this is me, this, I listened to Dr., Mr. West, we're hemorrhaging teachers in this school district, we're hemorrhaging support staff, schoolway cafe members, bus drivers, we need to take action and stop, we need to take the action to stop the decisions at the district level that are driving people away.
Thank you, Ms. Butchart, next up, Mr. Scott Cleary.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, superintendent, tonight, a quote comes to mind, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader," that was said by one of our presidents, John Quincy Adams. Moreover, though, when there's good leadership, people feel empowered to do the right things, communication is clear, it's not leaked to a favored few, and people feel valued at all levels of leadership. All these things are lacking in the top leadership of this district. I realize it doesn't, does me no good to say this, except to say, my loyalty is not to one leader, but in this case, the students of the county. With the brewing moral panic stirred by a vocal minority, a lack of leadership is something we can ill afford, particularly now. I'm gonna leave you with one other quote, "That which is not good for the beehive cannot be good for the bees." What's not good for the district is not good for the students of this county, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary, next up, Mr. Charles Peacock. Welcome, Mr. Peacock.
Thank you, sir, good evening, Charles Peacock, New Smyrna Beach High School. Today, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be throwing out some numbers, I'm gonna be throwing out a few facts and some overall opinions of the variety of employees that we have at Volusia County Schools. As of yesterday, and these stats differ slightly from the stats that were given earlier by Mr. Mark West, simply because they were done yesterday, not a couple days ago, but the openings in Volusia County Schools, we have nine administrative positions open, one hundred and fourteen instructional positions open, and three hundred and fifty-two support staff positions open, totaling four hundred and seventy-five openings in Volusia County Schools. It's a number that's far greater from the beginning of this school year, despite the number of new hires that we were told have been hired in, that number was given to us a few meetings ago, also by Mr. West, stating there was some six hundred-plus teachers that were hired on, when asked later on how many have been retained, it was somewhere around three hundred-ish, showing that there is still a negative trend going on in Volusia County Schools. Unfortunately, this has led to an overall dissatisfaction from teachers and staff with the current climate within VCS. There's a lack of support in areas like discipline, there's a feeling of being undermined rather than supported, there's constant excessive workloads that's creating undue stress on teachers and said support staff. Indirectly, not just all of the problems that we are having are stemming from leadership, but appointments made by said leadership. One in particular, I'll give it as an example, and this came up earlier, with saying that a majority of the supportive positions that are available are in extended-day enrichment program, or EDEP, it is collapsing, and this comes from an ex-facilitator who has left that and gone to para because they can no longer work for that leadership anymore. There's a lack of employees, there's a lack of enrollment because of the staffing, and as I said, facilitators are leaving due to the leadership of it. Not only is it just an extended day, but employees are dissatisfied with every other major appointment that's been made, creating a lack of trust in the decision-making of the leaders. Not that you don't know, but I'll tell you that the board has a decision to make, that decision is to extend or deny the extension of the superintendent's contract. I'll remind you that your decision as the board will likely weigh heavily on your own upcoming elections. Do not take this lightly, and listen to your employees. On a personal level, I'm gonna leave it with this, I'll be headed home shortly from here, I'm going home to finish some homework that will contribute to me finishing my degree as an ESE teacher. The decision made by the board tonight on the extension of the superintendent's contract, decisions on how you will rectify veteran teacher salaries, and the decisions that you make that will affect and influence the overall culture at VCS, will determine at the time of my graduation whether I decide to stay with VCS or take my skills to an adjoining county, thank you.
Next up, we have Nicole Lashley. Welcome, Ms. Lashley.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz, Mr. Cologne.
Can I ask you to speak into the microphone so the folks at home can hear you? Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Fritz, Mr. Cologne, and school board members, I'm reading two letters to you from persons who asked me to read their concerns. We are paras in a multi VE classroom at University High School, we have eleven students, all with significant needs, however, four of our students have serious behavioral issues, which results in many staff injuries, there was an injury this morning. We also have to deal with a student who continually and compulsively spits at us, the paras, teachers, classmates, as well as gen ed students. This happens in the classroom, the bathroom, the clinic, in the kitchen where the students eat breakfast and lunch, this also happens in the hallways, which again, affects the school, gen ed students, and whoever else is in the path. We feel that this is an extremely unsanitary environment that we are exposed to, and do not feel it is right or healthy. If you can help us resolve some of these serious issues before someone is seriously hurt, or becomes seriously ill due to these hazardous working conditions, it would be greatly appreciated. The second one, to whom it may concern, my name is, they left it blank, in saying they are too ashamed to say, I received a forty-nine cent raise, I have been working for Volusia County Schools for thirty-two years, my coworkers who have been working with Volusia County Schools for four to five years now make four dollars less than I do. Someone, anyone, please help me understand how and why this is, please understand, we all deserve the raise, but let's be fair about it. After thirty-two years, I can say, I love my job, I love my students, they deserve my best, and I expect Volusia County Schools to do their best by giving me what I deserve for my years of service. Thank you, sincerely, too ashamed to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and we will continue public comment after our next board action item. So we are going to move on to fifteen point zero two, approval of the salary schedule proposed for non-bargaining employees. Dr. Fritz?
I'm gonna ask Mr. West to come forward.
I'm gonna ask Mr. West to come forward. Thank you, I apologize here. Excuse me. We are bringing, I'm sorry, we're bringing forward the recommendation to approve the salary schedule for our non-bargaining employees. This evening, the superintendent recommends the approval of salary increases for non-bargaining employees, including professional technical, school-based, and district administrator based on the following criteria, employees on level one through three receive an approximate five percent raise, employees level four through eight receive an approximate three percent raise, and administrative positions, that's levels nine and above, and school-based administrators receive an approximate two percent raise.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Haynes.
So, Mr. West, you called me earlier today, prior to me arriving here at DAC, and you said that you had sent us out an email that you thought would answer some of the questions that I had posed.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the only thing is, I finally got a chance a little while ago to open it up and, you know, look at, you know, the different levels and everything, but my question is this, some of the things I asked is, for the non-bargaining, regardless of the level they're in, whether they go from level one or up, are, is there any longevity being offered in this piece?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, there's no longevity, are there any other